Okay, I will now call this meeting to order. The clerk has advised that we do have quorum. Please join me in the National Anthem.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. To page the law, we love the last man. When the grass is white and the air is fresh, he knows where to go. His story is too little way. The blue beyonds explore. God give our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Members, please join me in observing a moment of silence in memory of Joe Dixon, Ronnie Hawkins, and John Gilbert Peck. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on as the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Onishna Bay, the Chipewada, Hadno Shoney, and the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, the city clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting. Members of council, staff, and candidates in the public are participating in today's meeting remotely and in person, and the meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. I'd like to welcome the candidates and other members of the public who are here with us today and who are watching the meeting online. This special meeting of council has been scheduled for the following purposes: to fill the vacancies in the offices of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York and Ward 13 Toronto Centre by considering and appointing candidates to the offices in accordance with the procedures adopted by city council as May 11 and 12, 2022 meeting, and to introduce and enact bylaws for the special meeting. Members of council, this is a special meeting. Under council procedures, no other businesses, such as notices or motion, may be introduced. This rule cannot be waived. Are there any declarations of interest? Are there any petitions at this time? We will not review and confirm the order paper. Once the paper, the order paper has been approved by council, any changes will need a two-thirds vote. We have two items before us today. Council will recess at 12:30 and reconvene at 2:00 p.m. All those in favor of adopting the order paper? Carry. Members, I will now ask the city clerk to explain the process for today's meeting.
Thank you, Speaker. City council has adopted procedures for this meeting. These procedures were distributed with the agenda as part of my reports on the Ward 10 and Ward 13 vacancies. City council will deal with the vacancies separately. Each of the candidates that I've deemed satisfactory, who have completed a consent of nominee, an acknowledgement of qualification, and provided personal identification that I also deem satisfactory, may address council for five minutes. Candidates may address city council in person or by video conference. The speaking order for each vacancy will be determined by random draw. I will place the names of all candidates on equal-sized pieces of paper in a container and randomly draw the names. After each candidate has spoken, each member of council can ask the candidate one question. Members of council may speak if they wish once all the candidates have spoken and all questions have been dealt with. After members of council have spoken, council will vote by ballot. I will review the balloting process with you at the appropriate juncture. Upon conclusion of the balloting, I will declare to be appointed the candidate receiving the votes of more than one-half of the number of members of council present and voting, or the candidate selected by lot in the event that two remaining candidates are tied. At the end of today's special meeting, city council will enact bylaws to confirm the appointments of the successful candidates to the offices of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York and Ward 13 Toronto Centre for the remainder of the term of the current council.
Okay, members, our first item is item CC 44.1 on the appointment of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. And the city clerk wishes to address council at this time.
Members, in my first report, item CC 44.1, it lists the persons who have submitted nominations for councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. The following persons have subsequently withdrawn their names from consideration: Persida Ivan, Dean Marr, and Alan Solomon.
Councillor Holliday, you have a procedure motion on this matter, as this motion is lengthy, whilst the city clerk to display it on the screen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'll just take your guidance if you wish me to read it in its entirety, including the names.
You don't have to read all of it.
Okay, so I'll read the header. The following persons who have signified in writing that they are legally qualified to hold the office of councillor and consented to accept the office if they are appointed to fill the vacancy of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York shall be considered for appointment to fill such vacancy.
All those in favor shall pass, carry. Thank you. Members, the city clerk will now draw the names of the candidates to determine a speaking order.
Madam Speaker, the first name, I'm going to draw these by lot, and the first name is Hugh Simmons. The second candidate is Peter Scherer. The third candidate is April Engelberg. The next candidate, Jesse Allen. The next candidate, Michael Jackson. The next candidate is Julie Kay. The next candidate, Joe Mahavik. The next candidate, Runa Soriano. The next candidate, Mark Salvarinas. The next candidate, Azim Leela. The next candidate, Matthew Stoffer. The next candidate, Sarah Gardner. And the last candidate, Tint Hattay. Madam Speaker, that is the speaking order for the meeting.
The city clerk staff will post the speaking order online at toronto.ca/council. So, members, we will not proceed with the appointment for councillor for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York.
Madam Speaker, the first candidate to address council is Hugh Simmons.
Welcome, Hugh, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, Mayor John Tory, members of council, candidates, all here present. It's really an honor to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to address council as a candidate for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. It's really commendable firstly to thank each and every one of you for the leadership during the past two and a half years navigating our city and its residents through the COVID-19 pandemic, and for the fiscal and fiduciary responsibilities that goes with it. My hope is to collaborate with each and every one here and the residents of Ward 10 Spadina Fort York, and also to share with them in a collaborative manner the issues, the concerns, and also to help with the recovery and chart a new path. As your budget for 2022 highlights in terms of its guiding principles, the priorities are already set out to better serve, help, and invest in Torontonians. And through a whole community and a whole government approach, I look forward to helping in navigating, should I be considered a candidate, to sharing some key strategic priorities around economic growth and development, more so thinking of diversifying the sector and industries that will help sustain more growth through investment, incentives, and innovation. And also to really generate high-quality jobs and equitable access to infrastructure and facilities for all Torontonians. On the issue of affordable housing, one of my strategic priorities, is to really help in fast-tracking inclusionary zoning policy framework to enable affordable housing development for Torontonians who are in need, and making access to affordable, adequate, and suitable housing a key priority. And last but not least, climate change, resiliency, and sustainability, to work with you to build partnerships, to develop and implement programs, innovation, and renewable energy technologies to reduce climate impact and improve net-zero emissions as a city and as residents, and of course championing green, sustainable, and eco-friendly initiatives to make Toronto the leading environmentally friendly city in the world. Members of council, candidates, thank you for the opportunity to share, and to the residents of Ward 10 Spadina Fort York, I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate, lead, and serve, and take your issues to council. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Okay.
And to introduce and enact bylaws for the special meeting. Members of council, this is a special meeting. Under council procedures, no other businesses such as notices or motion may be introduced. This rule cannot be waived. Are there any declarations of interest? Are there any petitions at this time? We will not review and confirm the order paper. Once the paper, the order paper has been approved by council, any changes will need a two-thirds vote. We have two items before us today. Council will recess at 12:30 and reconvene at 2 P. M. All those in favor of adopting the order paper? Carry. Members, I will now ask the city clerk to explain the process for today's meeting.
Thank you, Speaker. City council has adopted procedures for this meeting. These procedures were distributed with the agenda as part of my reports on the Ward 10 and Ward 13 vacancies. City council will deal with the vacancies separately. Each of the candidates that I've deemed satisfactory, who have completed a consent of nominee, an acknowledgement of qualification, and provided personal identification that I also deem satisfactory, may address council for five minutes. Candidates may address city council in person or by video conference. The speaking order for each vacancy will be determined by random draw. I will place the names of all candidates on equal-sized pieces of paper in a container and randomly draw the names. After each candidate has spoken, each member of council can ask the candidate one question. Members of council may speak if they wish, once all the candidates have spoken and all questions have been dealt with. After members of council have spoken, council will vote by ballot. I will review the balloting process with you at the appropriate juncture. Upon conclusion of the balloting, I will declare to be appointed the candidate receiving the votes of more than one-half of the number of members of council present and voting, or the candidate selected by lot, in the event that two remaining candidates are tied. At the end of today's special meeting, city council will enact bylaws to confirm the appointments of the successful candidates to the offices of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York and Ward 13 Toronto Centre for the remainder of the term of the current council.
Okay, members, our first item is item CC 44.1 on the appointment of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. And the city clerk wishes to address council at this time.
Members, in my first report, item CC 44.1, it lists the persons who have submitted nominations for councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. The following persons have subsequently withdrawn their names from consideration. Persida Ivan, Dean Marr, and Alan Solomon.
Councillor Holliday, you have a procedure motion on this matter. As this motion is lengthy, I will ask the city clerk to display it on the screen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'll just take your guidance if you wish me to read it in its entirety, including the names.
You don't have to read all of it.
Okay, so I'll read the header. That the following persons who have signified in writing that they are legally qualified to hold the office of councillor and consented to accept the office, if they are appointed to fill the vacancy of councillor Ward 10 Spadina Fort York, shall be considered for appointment to fill such vacancy.
All those in favor shall pass, carry. Thank you. Members, the city clerk will now draw the names of the candidates to determine a speaking order.
Madam Speaker, the first name, I'm going to draw these by lot, and the first name is Hugh Simmons. The second candidate is Peter Scherer. The third candidate is April Engelberg. The next candidate, Jessie Allen. The next candidate, Michael Jackson. The next candidate is Julie Kay. The next candidate, Joe Mahavik. The next candidate, Runa Soriano. The next candidate, Mark Salvarinas. The next candidate, Azim Leela. The next candidate, Matthew Stoffer. The next candidate, Sarah Gardner. And the last candidate, Tint Hattay. Madam Speaker, that is the speaking order for the meeting.
The city clerk staff will post the speaking order online at toronto.ca/council. So, members, we will not proceed with the appointment for councillor for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York.
Madam Speaker, the first candidate to address council is Hugh Simmons.
Welcome, Hugh, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, Mayor John Tory, members of council, candidates, all here present. It's really an honor to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to address council as a candidate for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. It's really commendable firstly to thank each and every one of you for the leadership during the past two and a half years navigating our city and its residents through the COVID-19 pandemic and for the fiscal and fiduciary responsibilities that goes with it. My hope is to collaborate with each and everyone here and the residents of Ward 10 Spadina Fort York, and also to share with them in a collaborative manner the issues, the concerns, and also to help with the recovery and chart a new path. As your budget for 2022 highlights, in terms of its guiding principles, the priorities are already set out to better serve, help, and invest in Torontonians. And through a whole community and a whole government approach, I look forward to helping in navigating, should I be considered the candidate, to sharing some key strategic priorities around economic growth and development, more so thinking of diversifying the sector and industries that will help sustain more growth through investment, incentives, and innovation. And also to really generate high-quality jobs and equitable access to infrastructure and facilities for all Torontonians. On the issue of affordable housing, one of my strategic priorities, is to really help in fast-tracking inclusionary zoning policy framework to enable affordable housing development for Torontonians who are in need and making access to affordable, adequate, and suitable housing a key priority. And last but not least, climate change, resiliency, and sustainability, to work with you to build partnerships, to develop and implement programs, innovation, and renewable energy technologies to reduce climate impact and improve net-zero emissions as a city and as residents. And of course, championing green, sustainable, and eco-friendly initiatives to make Toronto the leading environmentally friendly city in the world. Members of council, candidates, thank you for the opportunity to share. And to the residents of Ward 10 Spadina Fort York, I look forward to the opportunity to collaborate, lead, and serve, and take your issues to council. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, thank you. Next.
Madam Speaker, the next candidate is Peter Scherer.
Welcome, Peter, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, council members, good morning, Mayor Tory. It's an honor and privilege for me to be here today. My name is Peter Scherer, I'm 32-years-old, born and raised in a small town, O'Myra, a place that in Waddies Community. I've been coming to Toronto my entire life with my family, going to various events. Just knew one day I'd call this great city home. My educational background includes mathematics, geography, and automotive management. After post-secondary, I moved to Toronto full-time in 2016, living at St. Clair and Bathurst with one of my older brothers. I worked at Discount Car and Truck Rental Head Office for a few years, during which time I moved to Liberty Village, where I still currently live. My most recent employment was in 2019, young driver. So I was a driving instructor downtown Toronto in car, in Ward 10, in the surrounding area. Through the pandemic, I worked on my investment portfolio. I did not collect any serb, knowing that it was for people that who needed it, and I'd be paying it back for years to come anyways. So, you know, I worked on my portfolio, helped my family. And I can say honestly that I'm not here to collect the salary of this position. I am here to help the city of Toronto. Toronto is the largest city in the country, we're the seventh-largest in North America. We are a true metropolis. I've been to New York, Boston, Miami, Chicago, L.A., San Francisco, Mexico City, Tokyo, Paris, Lisbon, Madrid, Barcelona, Rome, Athens. When you travel to these other great cities, you start noticing similarities. Synchronized traffic lights, pedestrian-only signals when it's busy, widened sidewalks, large public spaces. World-class cities completely embrace their waterfronts, check. They have great green spaces, check. And they also have incredible public washroom facilities. No one here uses a city of Toronto washroom unless it's an emergency. The general public relies on McDonald's and Tim Hortons. We need to understand that Mexico City's bus terminal has as hygienic washrooms as ours. Those were the worst I saw in any city in the world. Toronto is known for many great things, though. Multiculturalism, amazing food, great people, a place you can really feel accepted. However, we have room for improvement. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel to do so. We can learn from other cities. If you look to social media, a place where our citizens have zero filter, they'll tell you what the city is known for. Condos, construction, and congestion. I want to bring up two simple examples to improve city image. Southwest corner of Fronten Bay has had concrete barriers there as a reaction to an incident four years ago. These are meant for highway construction. Just down the street, you see Royal York has permanent barriers installed. It would only take a few days to install permanent barriers, and that would improve the sights of the city. Unfortunately, with no plan in sight, these are the sights for our tourists and general public. Secondly, we'll schedule a few landscapers with one weed whacker to do the entire garden. We'll shut down an entire lane. It caused everybody that day 20 minutes delay. So who likes quick math, right? 20 minutes? Minimum wage right now is $15 an hour, so we cost every single citizen $5 that day. About 50,000 people leaving the city that day, that's a quarter million dollars we cost the general public. That's the conservative dollar figure that we're costing people. I don't think we can put a value on 20 extra minutes with our loved ones, but that's what the city did. We prioritized grass over us that day. These are the factors we need to consider, being a metropolis. Today, I'm not here as Peter Scherer, but more as a citizen of Ward 10. I'm here representing every gender, every culture, and every age group. I'm a pedestrian, a cyclist, a TTC rider, and a driver. I'm motivated to work, motivated to listen, motivated to make solutions instead of excuses. Together, we can do better, and we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Next candidate?
Speaker, the next candidate is April Engelberg.
April, welcome. You have five minutes. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Tory and Toronto City Council. My name is April Engelberg, and I'm asking for your vote for interim city councillor for Spadina Fort York, Ward 10. I came in second place to councillor Cressy in 2018. I ran a clean and positive campaign. To show you more, here's the 2018 campaign video. Sorry, if we could just have an indulgence, hopefully my five minutes doesn't run up. Thank you, if we could have the camera back here, thank you.
Okay. Is that your presentation, April?
No, I'm going to speak now, thank you.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'll cut to the chase. Here's why you should vote for me. I live, work, and spend most of my time in Ward 10. I advocate for a ward at City Hall. Residents support me. I'm open-minded and happy to work with all of you. I'm not affiliated with any political party, with any politician, and I've never been a lobbyist. That matters to voters. Nothing comes between me and the constituents in Ward 10. Spadina Fort York has the youngest demographic in Toronto. It's the fastest-growing, it's the most dense, it's mostly condos, and it's home to many of Canada's largest and small businesses. I fit this demographic. I live in a 530-square-foot condo, but who's counting? I work in the financial district. It's important to have a local councillor. I'm forward-thinking. As you saw in the video, I was advocating for the subway extension to Liberty Village well before the Ontario Line was proposed. As you saw in my written materials at the Executive Committee, I was one of the first to support it. I'm here to be a city councillor, not just a caretaker. I'm being transparent about my plans to run for city council in October. You may not be aware, one of my opponents today is an active lobbyist for developers, including a development in Ward 10. It does not sit well with residents that someone can go from being a city councillor to then become a lobbyist for developers and then be appointed as city councillor overnight, especially in a ward where the main, biggest issue is zoning. Spadina Fort York had a very bad experience making national headlines in the recent federal election. Between our new MP and councillor Cressy resigning, voters feel unrepresented. Give Ward 10 someone who will advocate for them. I ask each one of you to vote like you are a constituent in Ward 10, looking for a city councillor. I live here, I work here, I shop locally, here. Things change very quickly here, and I can keep up. I'm in this for the long haul. Let's think about the future of Ward 10. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Well, thank you very much, April. Thank you. Okay, our next candidate?
Madam Speaker, the next candidate is Jessie Allen.
Okay, welcome, Jessie, you have five minutes.
Good morning, council. Good morning, Mayor Tory. Most of you know me as Gru. It's the name that I generally go by, but for the purposes of today, apparently I had to use my legal name. I have been a homeless person here in Toronto for the last eight years. And today, honestly, I don't expect any of you to vote for me, to take a seat in council. But I did want to come down and speak to you because housing affordability, housing for everyone as a human right, is one of the biggest, sorry, one of the biggest campaign issues, I think, of the upcoming election. And needs to be. This city is not affordable for those who do the little jobs, who work as baristas and as cleaners and doing all of the little service positions that make the demographics that April just mentioned of young and rich and upwardly mobile, it makes their jobs comfortable, sorry, their lives comfortable. Those of us who work those jobs and keep this city running can't afford to live in the city anymore. And so we end up either pushed out or pushed into camps, into the ravines, under bridges, as we lose our homes and end up on the street. It's completely unacceptable to, I believe, I think everyone in the public that our council and our police service consistently criminalize and brutalize the homeless population instead of actually helping. We have seen over and over in this council chamber as you commit in words to housing as a human right, to nothing about us without us. And every single time that those words are said, the actions never follow. As an interim councillor, if by some act of God you all decide to vote for me, I will be pushing for us every day to make action happen. Enough with the words, I don't care about the words. Let's make the actual actions that need to happen in this city on a wide variety of things. It's not just housing. It's road safety, it's general affordability. Do you know how many people in this city right now are trying to, are struggling to eat, struggling to afford to eat? And having to go to food banks every couple of days because that's all that you can find the food for from those spaces. It's despicable that in a country, in a city, in a province as rich as ours, we are unable to take care of our most basic needs for our most vulnerable citizens. I would like to see that change, whether it's with me or any of the other candidates here today. I just want to see some real, actual change towards these big issues. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and open to any questions.
Thank you, Jessie. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Jessie, for being here. Our next candidate?
Speaker, our next candidate is Michael Jackson.
Welcome, Michael, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, esteemed members of council, Honorable Mayor Tory. My name is Michael Jackson. I'm an educator with the Toronto District School Board. I'm a husband to a Pakistani-Canadian, father to our wonderful child, and a son to two great parents. I am here today because I love them dearly, and I want to be a part of shaping a bright and prosperous future for them and all Torontonians alike. I thank God for the inspiration through my father, Donald Jackson, who taught me what it means to be a leader and a Canadian. He was the George Chevallo of figure skating, a humble yet fearless competitor who defied unimaginable odds behind the Soviet Iron Curtain, a fear that propelled him into a Canadian icon, receiving the Order of Canada, Order of Ontario, and the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal representing 1962 of her 50-year reign. He devoted his life to giving back to his community. And now it is my turn to continue that legacy of bench-raising courage in the political realm through representing constituents during this crucial time in our history. As this chamber is well aware, there is uncertainty in the hearts of many Torontonians about their future, given the tumultuous last two years. This chamber has the means to provide that much-needed reassurance, and I will do my part with you for all the constituents in the ward for which I would be appointed. I am the right Canadian for this important post, for I understand the current political landscape, the influence in shaping it, our country's division of legislative powers, and the expectation upon councillors to their constituents, whether it be potholes that need fixing, to solving staffing shortages, to events that bring in much-needed tourism dollars. Furthermore, I understand that this is not just a mere job or task that is being applied to. This is a leadership role that requires something greater than just knowledge and experience alone, albeit they are necessary. It requires a character trait that is both difficult to articulate, yet unmistakable when witnessed. My father has it, I have it, you all have it, and is the reason you are sitting there deciding amongst us over here. I love this country, this city, our heritage, our values, and all the things that have made Canada a great pillar of democracy and freedom over the last century and a half. And I stand here before you today to do my part to help Canadians not only survive, but thrive through this global calamity that we've witnessed. I hope this chamber will consider my nomination for Ward 10 or 13, as I look forward to working with you together and collaborating to discover what the best, most tenable solutions would be for businesses, employees, students, parents, and families in our great city in order to thrive and prosper the way we once did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Our next candidate?
The next candidate, Madam Speaker, is Julie Kay.
Welcome, Julie, you have five minutes.
Good morning, morning, Mayor Tory, morning, councillors. Thanks for having me here today. Great to address council, chamber. Nice to meet all these great candidates, everybody so far is. I think we share a lot of the same ideas, and we look forward to seeing them in action, whoever is appointed. As you may have read in my brief bio letter that I mentioned the interim council position for Ward 10, and I'm seeking a vote for this role. I'm a business owner and have been in business since 2000. I'm a business owner and have been in business since 2008, operating out of Ward 10, Liberty Village. My businesses include IT cabling, infrastructure, hosted voice-over IP, and things of that nature for businesses. I've been serving businesses in this capacity, connecting people and businesses, and to their customers and to the vendors for 14 years. I have also been a volunteer, and I've been volunteering with the Liberty Village BIA for, this is my eighth year. And in fact, I needed to get special permission and take a leave of absence to actually apply for this role, which the BIA granted me, and I appreciate them very much for allowing me to do that. For the last three years, I've been on a community liaison committee hosted by the St. Felix Centre, and this committee has included members of the business community, residential associations, police, city council reps, community service providers, and harm reduction groups, and many other participants. This committee has been very successful and is now being used as a template for other areas throughout Toronto. So I like to help, participate, and get things done. That's my truest nature. I don't mind hearing other viewpoints and learning new things. So why do I want to be a councillor for Ward 10? Obviously, there are a lot of moving parts in this growing ward. We need to care about the people and the businesses and the future of this ward as we continue to build momentum and to recover. We need to know what resources are available and what obstacles are in the way that prevents this ward from kicking it up a notch. Elevating transportation, parks, planning better on construction, cleanliness, lighting, safety, communication, city services, business areas need to be welcoming, residential areas need to be peaceful, interactions respectful, and people need to be taken care of. We know when people are connected in their community, the community works better together. Let's connect our community. Let's make a list that is public and start working that list for this ward. There are many people who would like to help and don't know where to start. Obviously, there are big items already underway, and there is a need for advocating. Obviously, this council would like to get items passed before the end of this term. If appointed, I would work hard to meet with everyone and work to collaborate quickly and openly. The agenda I will work hard for will be the agenda of the people, businesses, and the future of this ward. Again, thank you, city council officers and the offices that responded to my email or my phone call. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you also again to these great candidates, and again, it kind of takes a lot of guts to come up here, right? So just throwing that out there. You know, we are very happy to put our name in this vote. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you very much, Julie. Thank you. Our next candidate.
The next candidate, Speaker, is Choma Havik.
Welcome, Julie. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, councillor Nunziata. Good morning, friends and former colleagues. Well, let me say off the top that my presence here, for me, shows that life indeed does have its twists and turns. After 27 years of serving on eight city councils, yes, it took some adjustment to turn the page and find new opportunities and new work, and I did it. Yet here I am suggesting to you to support me for the job of filling in for the next five, six months as the Ward 10 councillor. I've had 27 wonderful years here at council, and my time has only heightened my appreciation of what this place is about: building a great city, supporting people in their life journeys, creating a vibrant urban fabric, all the things that make a difference in people's lives in these magical places we call cities. If done well, communities live well; if done poorly, people get hurt and suffer needlessly. All to say, what council and city staff do is so important, and in the last three years, I've only grown to appreciate the task of city building and good city management, especially during these COVID times. I'm applying for this position, fully understanding that it is a caretaker role. I have absolutely no intention of running in the October election. On the invitation of councillor Cressy, I can appreciate that I just might be the right person at the right time, filling in for a short period of time. I can do this, support the excellent work of former councillor Cressy in Ward 10, add value in a supportive way to the work of the mayor and city council, provide some continuity on the board of health, and lay up, not decide, lay up some local issues for the new Ward 10 councillor to consider in the new term of council. A modest, caretaking, continuity role is what I see as the task for the person in this interim position. Many of you know my values and how I work. For those of you that are newer on council, let me speak of those values. Conscious, of course, that I do my best, and as my family would say, I am a work in progress. I believe in strong local government. I'm more a community development approach type of person, developing good public policy. I believe in a collaborative style of democracy rather than the conflictual style that is present in other orders of government. Yes, my heart is on the progressive side, but I try to reach out across whatever divides me and others to find common cause and common projects. I try to build good personal relationships with everyone. In the area of public health, I have been its chair for a few terms since 1997 on council. I really appreciate its ability to contribute to a better and healthier Toronto. This appreciation has only grown during the pandemic period, when tough decisions needed to be made. Overall, when compared to other global cities, I would say this council's leadership during this period, you were able to put aside regular partisanship and help Toronto shine as one of the bright lights among global cities. I've kept abreast of the various twists and turns involved in pandemic control and management. I want to work with the mayor, with colleague councillors, the province, and the federal government to continue that trajectory of excellence and collaboration that really helped make our city do well during these given pandemic times. Lastly, you may be wondering what I've been doing in the last little while. I've been teaching urban studies at UTSC, University of Toronto Scarborough campus, and York University. This has helped me to fully read those many excellent reports that staff have been producing over the years. As an academic, it has also caused me to look at other global cities and what they are doing around urban issues. Toronto's doing some great things, and we can learn some things from global best practices as well. I love the academy and what it can contribute to thoughtful public policy. Secondly, my 99-year-old pops, dad, lives with us now. I have again relearned that it all comes down to the human, the interpersonal, and the compassion that we show one another in our daily lives. I've been consulting and doing some mediation work with the city and with some private sector developments, developers. This has helped me to better understand the other side of city building better. I've come to better appreciate the role of the private sector in building the city. And yes, there is such a thing as a progressive developer who is also in touch with the common good. Lastly, I have volunteered with organizations like the Council of Canadians, I sit on their board, and with the Medical Aid in Dying House, Maide House, on their board and advisory board to help those organizations fulfill their ambitions. This has been all good, helping me to further appreciate good people in our city and making our lives better. I think these experiences will help me, help us, and I look forward to being a part of this once again for this short period of time. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Joe, do we have any questions? No? Okay, well, thank you, Joe, for being here. Our next candidate.
Madam Speaker, the next candidate is Runa Soriano.
Okay, welcome, Runa. You do have five minutes.
His worship John Torrey, Speaker Frances Nunziata, Deputy Speaker Shelley Carroll, members of the council, city staff, and fellow candidates for wards 10 and 13. Good morning. My name is Runa Soriano, and I'm honored to be considered today for being appointed to Toronto's Ward 10 or 13. I'm greedy, sorry. As a current resident of Spadina Fort York, a former Montrealer, a mother of a teenager, a foster dog mom, and a small business owner, I have experienced firsthand the socioeconomic and geopolitical differences between Montreal and Toronto, two largest and most cosmopolitan cities in Canada. I'm proud to say that Toronto is now my new home, my forever home. Toronto urban planners have beautifully designed and successfully executed a healthy lifestyle for its residents, workers, and visitors. Thank you. To my surprise, with initially a heavy heart, it was hard for me to admit Toronto has more recreational parks as opposed to Montreal, and they are phenomenally accessible not only for walking, jogging, biking, hiking, strolling, but also for skiing, snowshoeing, swimming, ice skating, and getting around by means of public and private transportation. My favorite's the bike paths and the beaches. I'm proud to say that I was able to safely bike home from Burlington along Lake Ontario. Biking during the pandemic also allowed me to discover one of Toronto's best gems, the Scarborough Bluffs. It felt like I was in the French Riviera, very mind-boggling. All these in an attempt by the city to make Toronto livable. Again, thank you. However, I also saw the ugly side that needs to be addressed further. As a solution seeker, here are my top three civic problems I'd like to advocate if appointed: housing crisis, family safety, and food insecurity. I will discuss the last two during my second five-minute speech. Thank you. Masculine hierarchy of needs claims that food, shelter, and clothing, belonging to the very bottom of the pyramid, must be addressed first and foremost in order to move up to the next level until self-actualization is obtained, which is the ultimate goal. But Toronto's cost of living is undoubtedly high, ranking second in Canada, after Vancouver, making it difficult to keep families in the city. Housing is the most expensive commodity Torontonians face. This then sow the seeds of poverty, which concerns public safety, then creates petty debts as well as prostitution, thus discouraging Torontonians to stay in the city and search for a cheaper, bigger, and/or safer space to live in, especially to raise a family. According to Statistics Canada, Toronto's dependent members, that is, the school age and the retirement age, are uniformly increasing, leaving a huge burden to our working age, that is us. We need to protect the interests of our working age because they fuel, maintain, and enrich the city's infrastructures, programs, and resources. So how do we attract this age group to stay and keep our economy growing? Here are my plans. Number one, invest in subsidized and co-op housing. Number two, extend extracurricular activities to our high school students. Number three, create a partnership with large grocers and soup kitchens and/or community fridges. Issue number one, tackling the housing crisis. Personally, it took me three months to find a place to live in when I moved to Toronto in 2019. It was a rat race. As the demands went up, so did the price, as well as the bidding getting ugly. At one point, I feared I would end up homeless. True story. So what solutions do I have in mind? The most popular suggestion is freezing and/or controlling the housing prices. So I will not expand on that. I would like to stress, however, that housing is a human right, as one of the candidates mentioned earlier, that even though Toronto is actively involved in offering shelters and funding rental grants for those who in need, these remain as temporary solutions to the growing housing crisis. Here are my thoughts. Number one, let's involve high-rise condo builders in turning one unit per 20-unit building into a subsidized housing to be allocated to families in need. Number two, repurposing abandoned buildings by turning them into low-rent housing and/or co-ops, all the while protecting its history. It's been proven many times that abandoned buildings attract squatting and criminal activities. In so doing, the city is killing two or three birds with one stone, solving the housing crisis, alleviating property, and diminishing criminal activities. Mayor Torrey, Ms. Speaker, Ms. Deputy Speaker, council members, city staff, and fellow candidates, I thank you for your time. And as mentioned earlier, I will address the families and food in my second five-minute for Ward 13. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate.
Speaker, our next candidate is Mark Salvarinas, and Mark Salvarinas is participating by video.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, Mark, you have five minutes.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thank you, Speaker. Good morning, members of council, Mayor Torrey. It's an honor to have the opportunity to address you today, as I seek to be appointed as interim councillor for Ward 10. I'm a born and raised Torontonian, grew up and currently live downtown, and I serve as a director on my condo board in Ward 10. I'll briefly touch on my background. My work experience includes administrative management, management consulting, and currently, I'm a program manager within the financial services industry. I have a reputation for being a problem solver and have built a career out of identifying challenges and developing and implementing solutions to complex matters. Relating to municipal affairs, in late 2019, I started working alongside councillor Philian in his office to establish the Willdale BIA along the north stretch of Yonge Street. After 10-plus years in the making, our efforts brought a somewhat polarized community together to see the value in a BIA. In late 2020, the vote passed and the BIA was established, and has since brought tremendous value to an important business district in our city. I'll note that my municipal experience is limited to that BIA and also as a keen observer of council meetings, thanks in part to great reporters like David Ryder, Ben Spur, and Matt Elliott, who are probably tweeting as we speak. I do not plan to run in this year's election, and I believe you should not appoint a candidate who will do so. I believe campaigning would impact a rookie councillor's ability to serve the community in the interim. In the same train of thought, if I were in your shoes, any nominee with direct experience would be my pick. I do understand that we have such candidates nominated for each vacancy today. Given this, I know my chances for appointment are slim to none. As such, I aim to use my time today to bring attention to the issues that I feel are critical for our city, specifically for the residents of Ward 10, as we recover from the impact of the pandemic. I hope each of you and the appointed councillor choose to prioritize the following. Number one, economic recovery, including stabilizing the TTC and city staffing and service levels before attempting to expand services. Assist commercial and hospitality sectors by extending programs like Ritual One and preventing vandalism that has increased dramatically in certain pockets of Ward 10 and 13. Replenish lost revenues and add new sources. Designating Toronto as a charter city would help us accomplish these last two items, and on the eve of a provincial election, I hope that you'll commit to engaging the newly-elected premier on discussing how this would assist Toronto's economic recovery. Number two, public safety, including improving safety on the TTC vehicles, which is critical to ensuring workers return to our business districts and their surrounding businesses. Enhance bylaw enforcement, specifically around short-term rental activity. It is ramping up now, and it's ramping up quickly. Noncompliant operators are taking valuable units off the long-term rental market. Just yesterday, The Star reported that rents downtown are up 15%. As a condo director, I'll also note that short-term rental units also impact the wear and tear of a building, specifically its elevators. They also have the potential to drastically impact the safety of a building, as we've unfortunately seen happen at certain buildings in Ward 10. We need to achieve Vision Zero, and we needed to do it years ago. For this, we need to fast-track any and all road improvements that lend to pedestrian and cyclist safety, period. Both non-fatal and fatal overdoses are increasing in our shelters. Facilities that were set up to protect our most vulnerable residents from the pandemic are now becoming a hazard for some. From publicly available data, fatal overdoses in any quarter since Q3 2020 are up over 200% compared to Q4 of 2019. Simply put, people are dying, and we need to find out why so we can prevent it. Lastly, number three, housing and green space. We can only hope to chip away at the housing crisis if we build both small and medium apartment buildings and co-op dwellings. Similar to short-term rental bylaws, we need to enhance policy enforcement of rent safety standards. Also, Ward 10 needs a rail-deck park in one form or another. Also, our POPS program and Park Levy's charge of developers are great for new parks, but I believe private partnerships could help fast-track basic maintenance enhancements to our existing parks. I'll note that The Star reported yesterday that 40% of park water fountains are not currently operational, and private partnerships could lend a hand in that regard. These are the issues that I feel are critical for Ward 10 residents and our city as a whole. I appreciate any questions you may have. I look forward to working with you, should you choose to appoint me. Many say there's not much you can accomplish over five months, two council meetings, but if I'm appointed, I look forward to proving the naysayers wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate. Our next candidate.
The next candidate, Madam Speaker, is Azim Leela.
Okay, Azim, welcome. You have five minutes.
Good morning, Your Worship Mayor Torrey, distinguished city councillors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Azim Leela, and I am seeking an interim councillor role for Ward ten. As interim city councillor, my purpose during this important but limited time is to support the aspirations of residents, businesses, and visitors who work and work collaboratively to achieve results that improve their quality of life. I will be intentional in building partnerships that link programs and services and rely on our public service for advice and provide direction. As a uniquely qualified candidate, I believe that I'm a strong fit to serve as councillor. I have been a Toronto resident for over 30 years when my family moved from Tanzania when I was nine years old with my two sisters. And I've lived in various diverse neighborhoods from Thorncliff, Flemington Park, East York, and now where I live, in Riverside District. Now, I'd like to highlight some parts and experiences that uniquely equipped me to become councillor. Professionally, after being selected into a competitive graduate leadership program at Royal Bank of Canada, I've spent the last 12 years driving digital transformation in banking and provided this level of work across three banks at RBC, CIBC, and PC Bank. I've been an elected board member that I currently stand on and an ex-chairperson at Skills for Change, an immigrant and settlement organization to place highly skilled newcomers into the workforce. I've been elected on the City of Toronto Community Advisory Group to work on Connect Toronto and the Digital Infrastructure Strategic Framework that was approved right here two months ago by the executive committee. I've been elected as a leader with UNESCO Canada to advance work in inclusive education and build coalitions of support with 26 leaders. As for my education, I've been very fortunate indeed. And I take a moment to think about when I first came to Canada when I was nine years old. But I've been very fortunate indeed to have completed four university degrees. I went to York University for a bachelor's in business and IT. I went on to do a master's in critical disability studies, examining the social model of disability versus the medical model of disability. And I was also fortunate to attend the London School of Economics and Political Science and Beijing University to focus on international affairs. I bring both a deep understanding of how governments respond to social and economic crises. You've just heard about my professional background, but on a personal level, on a personal level, I'm also a father of a six-year-old daughter. I'm deeply passionate about topics such as safe schools, green spaces, economic inclusion, financial literacy, housing affordability, and supporting local businesses like in my own BIA. These are the areas that I can bring value on day one. Now, despite my work in digital, I'm concerned about the excessive screen time in our always-on digital world. And this is why I personally devote time with my daughter to enjoy yoga, take mindfulness classes, and go swimming with her in our own city so that we can strengthen the bond and not erode it through digital media that's constantly on. This is why I am here today, to fulfill my mission to serve, to activate ambitions, and to strengthen our city where we live, work, and thrive. In closing, I'm asking you today for your vote as interim councillor. My qualifications and fit for the role will enable me to safeguard, strengthen, and help deliver results. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate.
Speaker, the next candidate is Matthew Stoffer.
Welcome, Matthew. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's actually Stoffer. It's an honor to be here today. Good morning, everyone. I am a longtime resident of downtown Toronto. I live at a nonprofit co-op and have lived there for just over 20 years now. My education was at the university formerly known as Ryerson, where I achieved my Bachelor of Commerce in Information Technology Management. And professionally, I have worked most recently as a business intelligence consultant, which basically means I take all little bits of data from various sources and transform that into useful information so that laypeople or executives or managers can make good decisions based on that information. I have been a director at the co-op where I live. It's a nonprofit co-op for just over eight years now where I was elected to a new term. I have served as an executive and on various chairs or various committees, sorry, as both chair and a committee member. This includes our Member Relations Committee, our Human Resources Committee, and various others. I think that this has given me a good background in navigating the subtleties of council, and I think this could lead to me being a very effective advocate for the people of Ward ten. And I also worked for Statistics Canada last year as a CLA for the 2021 census. And I think that gave me a good outlook on the people who live downtown and what the composition is. And I think that could make me a very effective advocate for the people who live here. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much for being here. Our next candidate.
Speaker, our next candidate is Sarah Gardner, and I believe Sarah is participating by video conference.
Okay, welcome, Sarah. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much, council members. I hope that each of you had a moment to review the package that I sent you on the resume that I have submitted. What I wanted to illustrate in my roles is that in major gift fundraising, I have been accountable to high-profile stakeholders. In my role as music publicist, I have experience in public relationships and understand the significance of optics. And then finally, in the last three years, I have been a Labour representative with a legal and fiduciary duty to represent the members of the union, 800 of whom were part of the Royal York Hotel, 200 or so at the St. Regis. During my time there, I also was a delegate on the Toronto and York Region Labour Council and elected to the Women's Committee. I submitted two letters of reference. One was a letter of commendation from a union member to say who it is that I am as a representative from that end of things. But for those of you who might be concerned about my union background and affiliations, I also submitted a letter from the director of HR from the St. Regis Hotel because I wanted to illustrate that I have a keen understanding that if the structure that is meant to support the vulnerable doesn't, that no one within the structure will thrive. The remainder of my remarks are as follows. The consequences of the global pandemic brought many unique challenges and devastated economic impact for the city. I know all too well, having been a Labour representative in the hotel and hospitality industry, which took a harder hit than most. TTZ ridership is down. Overall foot traffic in the core is down. Tourism went out the window, and still, we face a housing crisis that affects everyone. Toronto, as we know, derives from a mohawk word that through a few translations, although not directly, is intended to mean gathering place. I am thrilled to see the return of Cafe TO, the Toronto Jazz Festival, the CNE, as well as many of our standby festivals and events. I know that Doors Open Toronto came back this past weekend, and I hear you're looking to make Active TO a permanent fixture. As we emerge from a jilted economy and a polarized citizenship, I believe now is the time to remind Toronto the gathering place, who we are. We are the one dish with one spoon territory where we meet in peace and protect the land together. We stand on the traditional land of the Huron-Wendat and the Schnabi-Hodnashoni, and more recently, the Mississaugas of the New Credit. We are now also home to Mary Inuit, First Nation, and Métis people. We are Fort York, and the place where we successfully fought off American invasion in 1812. Toronto is the place where Labor Day in North America was born, and 10,000 workers filled the streets and demanded reasonable working conditions. We are still Toronto the good. I remember when you couldn't shop on Sundays. We are the most diehard hockey fans we'll ever meet, for better and worse. We have hosted other winning teams. I remember Joe Carter and Roberto Alomar, and more recently, Drake's favorite team, our championship Raptors, who started from the bottom and now we're here. Bringing people together is the challenge that lies ahead for this council, and it's why I feel poised for the role. One of the things that I learned working as a union organizer is that if I didn't herald all the good work that the union was doing, sometimes you would hear, "But the union isn't doing anything for me." Sometimes we hear this about government, and I know that when it comes to good governments, it's often the case that no news is typically good news. But the general public does not note this. They need to hear from us. They need active engagement. The City of Toronto is offering many wonderful programs, subsidies, accessibility support, but none of these programs are worth anything if the people they're intended for don't know they're available or feel unmotivated or do not have the tools to access them. My skill set as an organizer is one of the reasons, the chief reasons, I feel I am an asset to this council, a strong leader for either the constituency of Ward ten or Ward thirteen. I have stepped forward to fill either of these positions, knowing that I'd be fit for both ridings and have a deep understanding of each as well as a commitment to serve. Thank you so much for your consideration today. It is a deep honor to be here.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate.
Speaker, our next candidate is also our last candidate this morning,
Okay, welcome, Tint. You have five minutes.
To thank all members of the City Council for giving me this opportunity, I also would like to thank all candidates and all people. I will participate with this. Even if I elected or not elected, I will help elected person and whoever needed. And please, let me tell you for why I am running for this position by seven reasons. The first, I am running because I live in lovely community that's been very good to me. Being on City Council will be a way for me to get back to the community that has brought and encouraged me for the past 27 years. The second, I am running because I am an honest person. A council person may be honest in both their action and being intellectually honest with their approach to issue. The third, I am running because I am a valid individual. A council person is a representative of all the people. Philosophically, a good candidate is the one that brings a balance to you. Being balanced also means being able to work where with provision and city status, why not automatically defer into their judgment? The fourth, I am running because I am wholeheartedly dedicated, committed man. Doing the job right requires a significant dedication or tie and energy. Constituent relation, adhering meeting, and reading voluminous material is preparation for meeting are all but other jobs. I am single and freehand. The fifth, I am running because I am motivated, human. The primary motivation should be to serve the public interest. My special interest is public interest. As a good singer, I can power my duty with integrity and with a broader passion of what is in the interest of the overall community. The sixth, I am running because I had life experience. For example, I arrived here in 1995, Toronto, as a refugee. I have scale of working for kitchen helper to kitchen manager. I had knowledge of running small business. I running restaurant almost 11, 12 years, 13 years. I had involvement in USU as an elected member of the Boa Dariada, University of Toronto Student Union. The seventh, I am running because recently, I graduated with Honorable Bachelor as HPA in Political Science Speciality Training, University of Toronto. Training by University of Toronto. I donate my hard-working money and volunteer my precious time to others who need the most. These seven reasons are why I am running for this position. Please vote for me. I thank you all. And if I have time, I can show you This is my name. I am Political Science Speciality, graduate from the University of Toronto, downtown St. George. George. This is my own restaurant. I run this one almost 12 year. And I go back to school ESA, I learning ESA in Jobra. And then you can see here, I very close to primary. Dennis Kenny, Jason Kenny. And another one, this number I second time, Robfo, Mr. Robfo offer us to come and visit here. As you can see here, I very close to Mr. Robfo too. And this one I graduate for, Jobra is IEP. And this one I in the Boa Diritta sitting in University of Toronto. And I volunteer 2015 B and K. And I am one of the leadership student in the conference in University of Toronto. And this is my assignment. I got the many award as University of Toronto. And this was the United Nations training. And this is what the University of Toronto write it down about my life. Since when I right here, I can just speak. Hi, how are you? Thank you. And that's start to there, go to the University of Toronto and that's my life. And another one, I got the Queen Elizabeth Scholarship and going to Dajiling, India. And high school in Siliguri, India, I teach almost three month for volunteering. And I working with.
If, I'm sorry, if you can wrap it up, please.
Yes, I, yeah. And this is I am brown writer, Australian Canada. And this is another one I graduate and that's all. And thank you and thank Canada. You made my life better and I will make it better Canada too.
Yeah, thank you for being here and do we have any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, do any members of council wish to speak? Please put your name under request to speak. No, I don't have any. Now, members of council, I will now ask the city clerk to instruct you on the balloting process.
Madam Speaker, we will now proceed to the balloting for the appointment to the office of councillor for War 10 Spadino Fort York. Once balloting begins, members must remain silent and seated if present in the chamber. Members attending by video conference must remain silent and connected to the meeting. All members of council will vote by ballot. Members who are present in the chamber will be issued a paper ballot at their seat. Members who of council who are participating remotely will be placed in a video conference breakout room, one at a time, in alphabetical order. And members will be asked to consent to me casting their vote by proxy. Members will then instruct me on how to mark their paper ballot. Members, this process will take some time, so I'll ask you to have patience. Once all members present to the meeting have cast their ballot, I will advise the speaker to call for a brief recess so that I may tally the results. Once the meeting resumes, I will advise council of the results. If the candidate who receives the greatest number of votes cast receives votes of more than one half of the number of members of council present and voting, I will declare the candidate to be appointed. If the nominee with the most votes does not receive the votes of a majority of the members present, council will conduct another round of voting. The next ballot will exclude nominees with the fewest votes and any nominee with no votes. Balloting will continue in this way until the candidate receiving the most votes also receives the majority of votes. If only two nominees remain and the votes for the two remaining nominees are tied, I will select the appointee by drawing a name by lot. Members, the balloting process is about to begin. Members in the chamber, if you'll indicate your vote by placing an X in the space provided to the right of the candidate of your choice, we'll ask you to mark your ballot clearly and legibly. If I cannot determine your intention for any reason, including your handwriting, your ballot will be spoiled and not counted. Members who are participating remotely, as noted, I will seek your instructions on marking the ballot once we are in the video conference breakout room. You may only vote for one candidate. If you vote for more than one candidate, your ballot will be spoiled and your vote will not be counted. All members present must vote. If you do not vote for a candidate, your ballot will be spoiled. Now, secret ballots are prohibited by law. Members present in the chamber, you must print your name and sign your ballot in the space provided, this is near the top of the ballot. If you do not print your name and sign your ballot, your ballot will be spoiled and your vote will not be counted. Members participating remotely, I will print your name on your ballot and I will sign the ballot having completed it on your instructions. In the chamber, members in the chamber, when you're finished voting, please fold your ballot in half, place it on the ledge of your front desk for collection. We will collect all ballots, we will collect the ballots when all members in the chamber are finished voting. Okay, so members, we're about to begin. We will distribute the ballots to members in the chamber. Now, members of council participating remotely, please stay connected to the meeting with your video on, please, so that I am, I can, I'm aware you're in the meeting. And we'll place you in the breakout room one at a time where you can instruct me on how to mark your ballot. And Speaker, we'll start that process right now.
If everybody could please take their seats. This meeting is now resumed. If I can have everybody, all the councillors, please take your seats. Pardon? Yeah, I have to guess, I have to use the gavel. Okay, thank you. This meeting is now resumed. Councils considering the appointment to fill vacancy in the office of Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. The Clerk will now announce the results of the first ballot.
Madam Speaker, I have the results of the first ballot for appointment to Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. There were 22 ballots cast. The number of votes required to appoint is 12. There were no, no spoil, there were legal ballots. The votes for candidates are as follows. For April Engelberg, one vote. For Julie Kay, one vote. For Jo Mihavich, 20 votes. I will now read the names of the members casting votes for each of the candidates. The votes from each ballot will also be reproduced in the minutes of this meeting. For the candidate April Engelberg, Councillor Jay Robinson. For the candidate Julie Kay, Councillor Stephen Holliday. For the candidate Jo Mihavich, Councillor Anna Bylaw. Councillor Brad Bradford. Councillor Shelley Carroll. Councillor Gary Crawford. Councillor Mike Cole. Councillor John Fillion. Councillor Paula Fletcher. Councillor Mark Grimes. Councillor Cynthia Lai. Councillor Mike Leighton. Councillor Nick Mantis. Councillor Josh Matlow. Councillor Jennifer McAlvy. Deputy Mayor Denzel Minin Wong. Speaker Francis Manziata. Councillor James Pasternak. Councillor Gord Perks. Councillor Anthony Perutza. Councillor Michael Thompson. And Mayor John Tory. Madam Speaker, I declare that Jo Mihavich is appointed as councillor for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York for the remainder of the term of council.
Thank you, and on behalf of City Council, I wish to congratulate Jo Mihavich on being appointed to the office of councillor for Ward 10 Spadina Fort York. I would also like to thank all the candidates who participated in the appointment process for Ward 10. Mayor Tory, I understand that you have a motion to appoint the new councillor for Ward 10 to the same committees and boards as the previous member.
I do, Madam Speaker, and perhaps that will be shown in just a moment. There it is. And I'll extend as well my congratulations or condolences, as the case may be, to newly appointed councillor Jo Mihavich. And this motion proposes that he take office as well as a member of the Economic Development Committee, Board of Health, the Exhibition Place Board of Governors, the Campbell House Board of Management, the Harbourfront Centre Board of Directors, and the Waterfront Revitalisation Corporation as the mayor's designate through to the end of the term. Thank you, Speaker.
All those in favor, show of hands. Posed if any, carry. In addition to these appointments, the new councillor will also assume various ward-based appointments by virtue of office such as arena boards, BIAs, and community centre boards. So congratulate, congratulations, Jo Mihavich. Members, we will now consider the appointments to fill the vacancy in Ward 13 Toronto Centre. I would like to welcome the candidates and members of the public who have joined us today. For the benefit of those who may have just joined the meeting, I will ask the city clerk to explain the process for the next appointment.
Speaker, I'll just briefly recap the procedures that were, same procedures we used for Ward 10. These are procedures that council has adopted for this meeting. They were distributed with the agenda as parts of my report on the Ward 10 and Ward 13 vacancies. So we'll now deal with the Ward 13 vacancy. Each of the candidates who has completed a consent of nominee and acknowledgement of qualifications form and provide personal identification that I have reviewed and deemed satisfactory can address council for five minutes. Candidates may address council in person or by video conference. In a moment, I'm going to determine the speaking order for candidates this morning by random draw. I will place the names of all candidates on equal-sized pieces of paper in a container and randomly draw the names. After each candidate has spoken, each member of council may ask the candidate one question. Members of council can speak if they wish, once all candidates have spoken and all questions have been dealt with. After members of council have spoken, council will vote by ballot, and we will go through that at the appropriate time. And upon conclusion of the balloting, I will declare to be appointed the candidate receiving the votes of more than one-half of the number of members present in voting or the candidate selected by lot if there are two remaining candidates with tied votes. Now, at the end of today's special meeting, City Council will enact bylaws to confirm the appointments of the successful candidates to the offices of Ward 10 and Ward 13 for the remainder of the term of the present council.
Members, our next item is Item CC 44.2 on the appointment of councillor for Ward 13 Toronto Centre. The city clerk wishes to address council at this time.
Members, my second report, Item CC 44.2 lists the persons who have submitted nominations for the office of councillor Ward 13 Toronto Centre. The following persons have subsequently withdrawn their names from consideration. Alexandra Gray. Hannah Ignacio. Priscilla Ivan. Rachel Macagge. And Alan Solomon.
Councillor Carroll, you have a procedure motion on this matter. As the motion is lengthy, I will ask the city clerk to display it on the screen.
There we are. Thanks, Madam Chair. The following persons, who have signified in writing that they are legally qualified to hold the office of councillor and consented to accept the office if they are appointed to fill the vacancy of councillor Ward 13 Toronto Centre, shall be considered for appointment to fill such vacancy. Following candidates: Miguel Avila. Robin Buxton-Potts. Sarah Gardner. Maria Gardado. Timothy Hunting. Michael Jackson. Andrea Kelly. Reynard Khan. Aidan Lee Dodswell. Azim Leela. Azim Leela, Dean Maher, Michael Sillers, Runa Soriano, Matthew Stauffer. Didn't want to get it wrong a second time. Is that the, does it need to be scrolled down? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour, show of hands, carried. Members, the city clerk will now draw the names of the candidates to determine a speaking order.
Madam Chair, just, Madam Speaker, just, it's Peruzzi, just, just to have some information. Some of the, some of these folks spoke earlier, do they get to speak again as well this time? And secondly, will we work through the lunch hour until we get this finished? Or are we going to be breaking for lunch at 12:30 and then be coming back at some point this afternoon?
Yes, first of all, the candidates can't speak the second time. And the second question, yes, we will be breaking at 12:30. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Speaker. I will now draw the names of candidates to determine the speaking order for presentations this morning. The first candidate is Matthew Stauffer. Timothy Hunting. Michael Sillers. Michael Jackson. Runa Soriano. Azim Leela. Aidan Lee Dadswell. Sarah Gardner. Robin Buxton-Potts. Dean Maher. Maria Gardado. Miguel Avila. Andrea Kelly. And the last candidate this morning will be Reynard Kahn.
Thank you. And the city clerk staff will post the speaking order online at toronto.ca/council. Members, we will now proceed with the appointment of councillor for Ward 13, Toronto Centre. The clerk will read out the first candidate.
The first candidate for Ward 13, Madam Speaker, is Matthew Stauffer.
Welcome, welcome, and you have five minutes.
Thank you once again. Instead of repeating myself in interest of brevity, I'm happy to surrender the rest of my time, unless any of the councillors have any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions? No, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next candidate?
The next candidate is Timothy Hunting.
Hi, am I audible?
Yes, you are. Timothy, you have, you have five minutes.
All right, thank you. Good morning, members of council, Mayor John Tory, and qualified candidates. It is an honour and privilege to be here advocating for myself as a candidate for council appointment in Ward 13, Toronto Centre. Firstly, I would like to commend how publicly accessible the process has been leading up to this special meeting. Secondly, I would like to congratulate all the qualified candidates that have shown up today in the name of public service. The capacity and commitment of everyone here today is honestly inspiring, motivating, and encouraging when envisioning the future of Toronto. For an appointment of this kind, I believe it falls outside the given mandate to attempt to lead any new initiatives. As such, I imagine the successful candidate today will be primarily brought up to speed in order to effectively serve our constituents in a responsive and predictable manner. I believe I'm qualified for this position through my experience as a planner and as an educator. I should mention that I already keenly listened to council meetings already, and I believe that I am sufficiently well-versed in projects, plans, and policy ongoing at the city of Toronto. Considering soft skills, I pride myself at being judicious, empathetic, resourceful, and agile. In a short evening spent doing outreach this past Saturday, I was able to obtain the support and confidence of 26 residents of Ward 13. It was a time well-spent listening and conversing about the pressing issues in the city. These conversations were organic and free-flowing, and if it weren't for me holding a clipboard and taking down names, it would have felt like just a regular Saturday. This is because Torontonians have care and abundant insight for Toronto, perhaps to the chagrin of the city always being a point of conversation. I felt that 26 signatures were a natural place to end my outreach, considering the number of seats on council. This is me making a joke about expecting all 26 votes today in favour of my appointment. More than anything, I appreciate the experience of being here today. I look forward to the possibility of staying in touch with fellow candidates and established councillors alike, because I believe we're all here today for the same underlying reasons. We want to be a positive force for Torontonians. Let us be steadfast in the work that lay ahead of us. I'd be excited to take any questions, if there are any from council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at this time?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, councillor Bylaw.
Just a quick question, if the candidate would be running in the October election?
I will not be.
Any, any, any award, or just, just to make sure? Not in any award?
No, I will not be running for any public election this November, although the experience has been really interesting, and I've found a lot of joy in the process, so maybe in a few years, but not this November. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next candidate?
The next candidate, Speaker, is Michael Sillers.
Okay, Michael, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Greetings to Mayor Tory and the members of council. I don't have any prepared presentation, just a few notes. I'm basically here to introduce myself, not make a campaign speech. I've had no idea what to expect, and I hope that you've had an opportunity to review my submission. I did expect more questions, but I'm pleased to see so many have taken the opportunity to apply for this, for this opportunity. And in case you haven't seen my submission, I'll do a very quick review of it. I currently reside at the David B. Archer Co-op on the Esplanade in Toronto, where I have been a member of the Board of Directors for several years now, several terms. I've lived in Toronto all of my life, lived, worked. I have experienced happiness and joy. I've experienced trauma, abuse, physical and mental illness. I've lived a comfortable, middle-class existence. I've also experienced times of extreme need. And I feel that this puts me in a position to, to understand some of the accomplishments and struggles that face people of Toronto. As a councillor, I hope to provide a voice for the people, not just in the area that I'll be representing, but all of Toronto. And I seek to embrace the challenges and the, of working with council, and I hope that you'll see my application favourably. Just a brief list of some of the challenges that I think we face. Things, obviously, people who are experiencing homelessness, overdose deaths, the availability of services. And with the availability of services, services being concentrated in a big city like Toronto, the affordability of people to access those services, people to live in, in this city is a, is a challenge, particularly people who are in need of the services the city offers, and as well as the opportunities at the city offices. There's green space, mental illness and access to psychological services is a challenge that I see people facing every day. I meet people and speak with people in the street, and my neighbours, and people that I know personally who, who experience these, these situations. Some of the things that I hope to provide support for are, along with the above-mentioned, things such as potential for longer-term solutions for people who are experiencing homelessness, safe drug supply, community policing, and increased engagement, accessibility and promotion of services. One of the things that I've seen is that a lot of people are not aware of the services that are available to them. Things like smart development. We've all seen how much Toronto has developed in a, in a very short time. And also, street safety and things like desolate blocks, blocks without any windows that, that make, that make for, for a scary streetscape. And with that, to mention that sometimes, simple ideas can, can help. For example, any time that I see a reduction in the number of lanes, I see traffic congestion. Sometimes, the solutions are very intricate, and the problems are complex. Consider looking at how other jurisdictions have, have dealt with these problems and come up with novel approaches. And finally, I just want to mention that some things, that we all have responsibilities, but we have to recognize that some things, particularly things such as necessities of life, should be rights. I thank you for your time, and I will need to take any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councillor Bylaw?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just the same question, if you're planning on running in any ward in October for the municipal election?
I had considered it. I don't think that there's time, and also, if I am appointed, there most definitely won't be time for me to consider that, but I would consider it in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next candidate?
The next candidate, Speaker, is Michael Jackson.
Okay, Michael, you have five minutes.
Good morning, esteemed members of council. As you know, my name is Michael Jackson, and a question on many people's mind is, what is it like having a name like that? And with five siblings, Jackson Five made high school quite interesting. This will be a bit of a repeat, as Michael Jackson has often done. I am an educator with the Toronto District School Board, a husband to a Pakistani Canadian, father to our wonderful three-year-old boy, and a son to two wonderful parents. I am here today because I love them very dearly, and I want to be a part of shaping a bright, prosperous future for them and all Torontonians alike. I thank God for the inspiration through my father, Donald Jackson, who taught me what it means to be a leader and a Canadian. He is the George Shivalo of figure skating, a humble yet fearless competitor who defied unimaginable odds behind the Soviet Iron Curtain. A feat which propelled him into a Canadian icon, receiving the Order of Canada, Order of Ontario, the Queen Elizabeth Diamond Jubilee Medal, representing 1962 of her 50-year reign. He devoted his life to giving back to his community and to Canadians. And now it is my turn to continue that legacy of benchmark-raising courage in the political realm through representing constituents during this crucial time in our history. As this chamber is well aware, there is uncertainty in the hearts of many Torontonians about their futures, given the tumultuous last two years. This chamber has the means, and has, but it has the means to provide that much-needed reassurance, and I will do my part with you, for all constituents in the ward to which I would be appointed. I believe I'm the right Canadian for this important post, for I understand the current political landscape, the influences shaping it, our country's division of legislative powers, and the expectation upon councillors to their constituents. Whether it be a pothole that needs fixing, solving staff shortages, to events that need to bring in much-needed tourism dollars. Furthermore, I understand that it is not merely a job or a task that I'm applying for, but a leadership role that requires something greater than just knowledge and experience alone, albeit they are absolutely necessary. A character trait that is both difficult to articulate, yet unmistakable when witnessed. My father has it, I have it, and all of you have it, and it is the reason why you are sitting over there, making decisions about us over here. I love this country, this great city. I'm born and raised from Toronto. Our values and all the things that have made Canada a great pillar of democracy and freedom over the last century and a half, I love this place. I love the city, I love the people. And if I were to be appointed, I would want to speak on behalf of everyone, not just some, but everyone, because everybody should have a voice. I stand before you here today during these unprecedented times with unprecedented challenges, to do my part to help Torontonians not only survive, but thrive through this global calamity that we've been through. I hope this chamber will consider my nomination for Ward 13, as I look forward to working together with you all and collaborating to discover the best, most tenable solutions for all businesses, employees, students, parents, children, families in our great city, so that they may thrive and prosper once again in the way we once did. I thank you for your time, and in the fall, at this point, I do not have any intentions to be running in the next election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you. Our next candidate?
The next candidate, Speaker, is Runa Soriano.
Good morning, it's me again. I think I'd like to elaborate a little bit more about my academic background. So I went to Concordia University, I have a political science degree. I took a five-year sabbatical to raise my son, and went back to school, Concordia again, to do a community service, because I realized during the five-year sabbatical that, that there are non-profit organizations, and I think, like, I would like to extend that, their, their objectives. And I got bored, and then I went back to school again, this time to McGill, and I took PR and management. So I would like to continue on with my, my suggestions. So I'm sorry to bore you once again, but I hope you enjoy it at least. So my issue number two is to extend after-school program for teenagers. I noticed that after-school programs subsidized by Toronto stop at age 12. I strongly, strongly advocate that after-school programs should be extended and partnered with nonprofits until our children are legal age to vote. These programs must be community-centric by stimulating leadership and teamwork, such as tutoring, playing sports, or music, promoting creative arts through literary and visual arts, encouraging independence through home economics such as cooking, sewing, gardening, which also increasing the community gardens in our public spaces, and even joining the cadets, where they learn to fly a plane, sail boats, survive in the wild. I'm, in fact, I'm a proud, I'm proud- boats, survive in the wild. In fact, I'm proud I'm proud to say that my son has been a member of the Air Cadets since he was 12. We are well aware that poverty creates social issues. Our teenagers are one of the most vulnerable members of the city, can easily get exposed in petty crimes when surrounded by the wrong groups if parents have to work more than 40 hours per week to make ends meet. These activities could easily elevate to organized crimes and even gun violence. And we all know that Toronto is becoming more and more notorious. By subsidizing our after-school programs, we are actively preventing future obstacles whilst improving public safety. So yes, we must intervene now in giving access to additional skills and be part of the solution, not the problem. This is the best age to navigate them, motivate them, and tame their temperament. They are our future. What happens when adolescents are encouraged to do extracurricular activities? They become part of the community, but most importantly, they stay out of trouble. What does this initiative mean for the nonprofit organizations? To get the extra help to execute their projects, all the while training our children new usable skills that could potentially steer to their future career? Issue number three, food insecurity. We don't talk about it often, but it's real. In Quebec, the provincial government covers prescription drugs. Should a citizen lose his her job? COVID-19 has created unemployment across the world and Toronto is not immune to it, resulting in some residents to pay the rent first than hydro, internet, phone bills, medications, or mental health services, putting food at the bottom of their budgetary list. All these are necessary for our working age to return to the workforce. Food is inevitably always in everyone's mind, especially the rising price of gas and this year's Russian occupation of Ukraine. For some people, access to fresh food becomes luxury, yet healthy eating prevents serious diseases such as diabetes, obesity, and cardiovascular problems. Does our working age group really have to choose between shelter, access to jobs, improving their and other family members' health, or being able to eat three times a day? Remember, we need the working age group if you will maintain and enrich cities' infrastructures, programs, and resources. They are the ones working to secure our future. This is why we have to make sure food is addressed. With that in mind, large courses must contribute and commit to donating to soup kitchens and our community fridges and lowering the price of food. Mayor Tory, Ms. Speaker, Ms. Deputy Speaker, council members, city staff, and fellow candidates, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Byla?
Same question. Are you considering running in the next municipal election anywhere in the city of Toronto?
Oh, yeah.
You are?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next candidate?
The next candidate speaker is Azim Leela.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, your worshiped Mayor, Tory, distinguished councillors, staff, and members of the public. My name is Azim Leela and I'm seeking your appointment as interim councillor. As interim city councillor, my purpose at this crucial time is to support the aspirations of residents, businesses, and visitors, and to work collaboratively to achieve results together. I will be intentional in building partnerships that link programs and services and rely on our public service in order for the best advice and to provide direction. As a uniquely qualified candidate, I believe that I'm a strong fit to serve as city councillor for Toronto Centre Ward 13. I've been a resident for over 32 years. My family moved to Toronto with my two sisters and we first moved to diverse neighborhoods such as Thorcliff, East York, and where I live right now in Riverside District. And I must say, I'll be able to bring that knowledge and reflect the voices and the needs of the people. Now, I'd like to highlight some past experiences that I believe will make me a unique candidate. Professionally, after being selected into a competitive program at Royal Bank of Canada, I spent 12 years driving digital transformation in various leadership roles at RBC, CIBC, and PC Bank. I've been an elected board member and ex-chairperson at Skills for Change, an immigration and settlement organization that places highly new that places highly skilled newcomers into the workplace. I've been elected in the city of by the City of Toronto's Community Advisory Group to work on Connect Toronto and the Digital Infrastructure Strategic Plan that was approved in this council by the Executive Executive Committee two months ago. I've participated in many conferences and in many places I've met some of you, such as the Toronto Global Forum. And I've also participated in international forums with UNESCO Canada to advance work on inclusive education policy and build coalitions. As far as my education, I've been fortunate to obtain an undergraduate degree from York University in Business and Information Technology, a master's in Critical Disability Studies focusing on the social model of disability versus medical model, and the constitutional law that provides the provisions for those protections. I've also had the opportunity to study at the London School of Economics and Peking University abroad, where I focused on international relations and understanding the role of governments during international crises. I'd like to highlight one particular area where I had an impact in our community. I joined Skills for Change as a board director in 2015 and served as chairperson from 2017 to 2020. During this time, I led the development of a five-year strategic plan focused on four key pillars. One of the pillars was to diversify funding and, given my understanding of the needs of equity-seeking groups such as immigrants, refugees, racialized persons in the GTA, and how best to serve them, I helped lead the organization through years of growth from $5.7 million to $7.2 million and an increase of clients and programming. This is the type of direct impact I've had. You've just heard about my professional experience and on a personal level, I'm also a father of a six-year-old daughter. I'm deeply passionate about topics such as safe schools, green spaces, economic inclusion, financial inclusion, accessibility, and supporting local businesses like my own BIA. These are the areas and more where I can bring value and impact on day one. I also want to mention I've lived and worked in the downtown core for three banks. So having lived and worked in the core, I believe I have a unique opportunity to understand those needs. Now, despite my work in digital, I'm also concerned about excessive screen time in our always-on world. This is why I personally devote time with my daughter around mindfulness, yoga, swimming in our city, to ensure our relationship with each other and with nature is not eroded. This is why I'm unequivocally here today. I'm here to fulfill my deep mission to serve, activate ambitions, and strengthen our city where we live, work, and thrive. In closing, I'm asking you today for your votes. My qualifications and fit for this role will enable me to safeguard, strengthen, and deliver results. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Counselor Byla?
Same question. Just wondering if you're considering running anywhere in the city of Toronto in the next upcoming municipal election?
Not at this, no. Thank you for the question.
Next candidate?
Speaker, our next candidate is Aidan Lee Dadswell.
Welcome, Aidan. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I lived in District 13 for about 10 months when I first moved into Toronto. I was a student at the time. When COVID hit, I had to drop out of college and it wasn't a great program for me anyway. So sorry, just gathering my thoughts. I am aware firsthand of the issues that are faced by the community in Toronto Centre. I lived in a very rough part of town, just just to the east of Dundas Station. And I became very familiar with the people who I would meet on the street day by day. I was also fully aware at the time that I would that I would have very easily become one of those people had I not had the support of my family. Housing prices in the city centre and in Toronto in general have become and are and continue to become so absurdly unattainable for regular workers and for students that it discourages any incoming people from any incoming people of relatively low class from making it into Toronto. Once they are here, they have to face a number of extremely difficult hurdles, many of which are not explained to them at the outset. And finding an apartment, keeping an apartment, maintaining pay for rent becomes almost impossible on a minimum wage job. In my current employment, I am working as a cashier. I have approximately $600 per month. I'm working part-time. I'm looking for further employment. But on that partial on that part-time employment, I am unable to afford any apartment in the city. I am unable to afford half of any apartment in the city. I am unable to afford a third of any three-person apartment in the city. Believe me, I have looked. There is now, and that is just rent. That does not cover any other living expenses. With those $600, I can pay approximately 30% of my rent at present. The rest is covered by my family. And if I lacked that family, if I lacked generational wealth, I would not be able to live here. I would not be able to work here. I would not be able to hold down a job in Toronto and I would have to either move away or end up on the street. Toronto is facing a serious problem right now. The city itself is a lovely place. It has been and can be a world leader in human-oriented design. Already with the transit system, we're seeing that and it has been that way for as long as I or my parents can remember. There has always been this strain in Toronto's culture of placing the individual's mobility and freedom at the forefront. The problem that is being faced currently, that I would like to be on this council to solve, is that the city relies on a class of people who cannot live here. Toronto City Centre needs more housing. Toronto City Centre needs more available housing and affordable housing. And as long as that is not provided, this young and potentially vibrant community is going to stagnate. The rebuilding effort needs new housing construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Oh, there's a question for you by Counselor Byla.
Sorry.
Thank you. You probably heard the question that I'm asking everybody.
Yes, I've heard the question. I am considering it. I would if I were appointed. If I am not appointed, almost certainly not.
Thank you.
Okay, if I can have the next candidate?
The next candidate is Sarah Gardner, who was to appear by a video conference. Madam Speaker, Sarah Gardner does not appear to be connected to the meeting. I will call her name one more time in case she's present. Sarah Gardner? Madam Speaker, she does not appear to be present. The next candidate is Robin Buxton-Potts.
Okay, welcome. Robin, you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Through the chair to Mayor Tory, members of council, thank you very much for this opportunity to make my case for why I should be the interim city councillor for Ward 13 Toronto Centre. I have three reasons why I think this makes a lot of sense. One, I have the direct support of the former councillor and our residents. I have direct current knowledge of the ward and the residents, and I have a proven commitment to public service. I am greatly honored to have the endorsement of former councillor Wong Tam in this role, but I also have the support of our local residents' associations. In my conversations with them, explaining my intention to run for interim councillor, they all agreed that this would be the best path forward for our community. In those conversations, I also promised them that I would not run in the October election for this role. My intention is fully to be a caretaker and to provide a thorough transition to whoever the Ward 13 constituents duly elect. For the last two and a half years, I have served as councillor Wong Tam's chief of staff. I was hired in the office in 2019 as the director of communications and was promoted by August to chief of staff role. I have essentially helped lead our team through the pandemic. I know city council and the procedures intimately. I have written motions. I have written our newsletters. I have the support of our office staff. This is important to me because it means that I will be able to step into this role and immediately provide the exemplary service that councillor Wong Tam has provided to our constituents for the last 12 years. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Toronto, was born and raised here. I currently live in co-op housing and I am so grateful that I am able to continue to live in the community that I was raised in. I see myself, though, as a citizen of the entire city. I went to Progress Scarborough Campus for Centennial. I'm a graduate of York University. I've lived in Midtown. I've lived in the West End. I've lived in Cork Town. I travel across the city all the time, by bike, by transit, by car. I participate in the events. I love this city so much. I actually have experience working in an interim councillor's office role as well. In 2014, when then-councillor Vaughan ran for city for the federal government, I was in his office. I worked for then-interim city councillor Sida Ram Kalawansing and I was honored to stay with then-councillor Joe Cressy to help with that transition. That is what I'm passionate about, is maintaining the office, knowledge, integrity, to help with that transition. I care about the city. I care about the residents of Ward 13 and I would like to see the work that we have started continue and have a very clean, thorough transition for the next city councillor. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Counselor Byla?
Thank you. I noticed that you said you wouldn't be running for the role, this role. Are you considering running at all?
I have no intentions of running. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate?
Speaker, our next candidate is Dean Marr.
Okay, welcome, Dean. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I think it's it's important that we acknowledge the work that Robin and the staff have done. You've done a great job and I like how that you're all gelled together and hopefully I can work with you because you do need we do need to keep the office running properly and hopefully I can take on the role as councillor. But starting for that, I would just like to say first of all, happy Pride Month to all the councillors and Mayor Tory. happy Pride Month to all the councillors and Mayor Torrey. And I am an openly gay man in Ward 13, close to the village, and have a proven track record in my community organisation and leadership. And I hope later this month, we can all walk together in Toronto's Pride Parade. However, as of today, we are not representative on city council for the first time in almost 30 years. 12 of those for a gay man. However, today, it's all up to you to make that change. It's in your hands. Representation matters, as you acknowledged during the flag-raising ceremony. It matters at Pride, especially in Ward 13. I started volunteering in Toronto in late 90s on a Rogers Community channel about gay, lesbian, transgender issues in the city. Over time, I was inspired to create two residents' associations in Ward 10, one of those which was incorporated as a not-for-profit in City Place. From that, I brought together those businesses to form a steering committee so they could form the City Place Fort York VIA. I even began my animal advocacy in this actual council chamber. It was championed by Glenn DeBeere maker. My request was to get the city to ban the sale of cats and dogs in Toronto pet shops. And many of you actually voted for that in the past unanimously. And from that experience, I served a three-year term on the board of directors for the Toronto Humane Society. And much more community work is listed on my resume that accompany today's agenda. Now, I'm no longer the 23-year-old from St. John's who moved to Toronto in the mid-'90s. I'm a 50-year-old, and I'm concerned about people being able to pay market rent on a fixed income, especially when they retire. And I believe the co-ops are the best way to go, especially the Nassmeth co-op that the city has right now, where they can put some up, where they have condos in the Ace condo down towards the waterfront. And that's the best option for any inclusionary zoning condos built. I want to reignite the passion in our communities and businesses by going to them in person over the next five months, listening to what they need and what they want, and offering them help when I can. So many small businesses have been hanging on by a thread. Many did not make it. The issues in Ward 13 can't be fixed or addressed if the next five months are treated as a hiatus until the next councillor is elected. There has been much pain in the city over the past two years. We have lost people and suffered financial hardship and all that comes with it. Millions of us have lived in the city, but it felt like we had been drifting world apart because of restrictions, lockdowns, and stay-at-home orders. Just because only a few council meetings remain, we should not ignore the 100,000-plus residents. This is the best time to meet with them and listen and learn. With in-person town hall, community halls, in all Ward 13 community centres and schools, I want to get people together again and not lose the community momentum that we had two years ago. I also want to meet with the homeless, those living in parks, shelters, or gathering in areas like Sherburne and Dundas, Sherburne and Queen, and George Street where shelters are. And they need to know they are important. And I want to listen to them and get their stories to better understand how they got there. We can't help someone unless you know them. It's also essential that I bring together marginalised communities and the police. After two years of pandemic isolation, we can't lose the gains we prior made. For example, the gay community is still building trust with the police after Bruce MacArthur was arrested and convicted. The interim appointment is about the next five months and how I can use it to make up for two years of virtual meetings and revive in-person community engagement for the 100,000-plus residents in Ward 13. I will be a present councillor who also lives here. And I'm asking for your vote so I can be the interim councillor for Ward 13. I also sent in a letter attached to the agenda. I hope you had a chance to read it.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I'm not going to run for council, or school board, or mayor. I wouldn't win mayor, anyway.
Thank you.
No, I support Mayor Torrey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, so our next candidate before we break for lunch.
Our next candidate speaker is Maria Guardado.
Okay, Maria.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Fellow candidates, council members, awardship, and Madam Speaker and Deputy Speaker, my name is Maria Guardado, and I am a resident here in Ward 13. I have studied political science at TMU, also previously known as Rarston University. I have worked in various fields of federal government, ushering in different... And I want to run for city councillor because there, as many candidates have gone over, a thematic, I guess, common component of what everybody has mentioned thus far is the housing crisis that is ongoing and is increasingly, increasingly getting worse. I've lived in Ward 13 since my youth. And it seems like every time a new condo goes up, there's just more and more people on the streets. The opioid epidemic is also, epidemic is getting also really bad. I've also worked on the provincial youth cabinet in pushing these policies towards the House of Commons and engaging in these different components that are now taking place in Vancouver, BC, in which case they are actually implementing different safe houses for recreational use. However, I also think that it's important to focus on single-family households in Ward 13. Single-family households make up the largest demographic in the ward. And I think it's really imperative that we help and support those single-family households as they are a huge, huge component that make up our ward. Additionally, I would like to really focus on the youth crisis that I think is ensuing. In our country alone, in this ward alone, across the city, youth are highly, highly... Youth unemployment records are breaking levels. And I see that, you know, other colleagues or past friends or even just local residents have been telling me that it's so hard to find stable employment, especially with the non-competitive rates that are ensuing at this moment. I really do think that there needs to be some focus on the youth as the youth do pave way to our future. And if our youth are uninformed, misguided, and led out to the trenches, what's going on with the housing crisis will just turn into more of an epidemic than it already is. I truly, truly believe that in order to sustain Toronto, we need to focus not only on making our buildings and infrastructure more accessible. I am a person that identifies with a non-visible disability. And I know a lot of others that do go through a lot of hardships. And it's horrible. And I want to help be, help Safeway and mediate into helping other people with the same issues. I also would like to acknowledge the ongoing violence that is going on in our cities. Most recently, you know, people have been, for some reason, taking out hand rifles into schools and coming with them on school grounds. And I think that we need to step up our community development because there's a huge gap. There's a huge gap in this day and age between the community, the youth, and infrastructure. And I think that it's widening the gaps even more. And I think that is why I think I would be a great asset for an interim city councillor as I have worked in Queen's Park. I've worked for federal members of government. I have worked for Census Canada. I've worked for different government federal agencies. And I think that I'm the type of person to be brought up to speed and excel in the programmes and the initiatives. I also recognise that being a first-generation Canadian and being a first-generation academic, it's part of my duty to give back to the city that's given me so much. Like other candidates I've mentioned, I do have a great love for the city, and I would love to give back to it more. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a terrific day. And thank you to everyone who is here.
Thank you. Questions, councillor Bailly?
Same question. Would you be running in the next municipal election anywhere in the city?
No, I have not considered it at all at this time. And I presently wouldn't think it would be a good idea if I were to be appointed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
If it's the will of the body, I'll move to extend to finish. I think there are only a couple of speakers left.
Okay. There's a motion to extend to complete. It's on the screen. On favour. Okay, Carrie, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Speaker, the next candidate is Miguel Avila.
Hello, everybody. My name is Miguel. I don't think you can see on the screen. You want me to see it, or you want me to stand up? Okay, you want me to stand up? Okay. So, I've been tweeted that right now, there is an Indigenous woman, a Metis, who is about to be evicted from Allen Gardens. I'm an Indigenous man. And when we talk about truth and reconciliation, it means we need to secure housing for our Indigenous people. I want to beg the mayor, I want to beg council, to be nice with that woman. Her name is Ling. There was another man also last week. His name is Jordan. He was going to be evicted if he stepped out of his shelter housing. Like, we had to be kind and generous to Indigenous people because this is the land. I am not born in this land, but I am a supporter and ally. So, I have three things to address to city council because I know that the chances of being elected are next to zero. But I'm going to make it simple for you. I want to throw my support behind Robin Buxton. Why? Because we need continuity at the ongoing conversations for resounding of Faces 4 and 5. We need to have someone with knowledge and who knows the file. And also, she got a look at the memorandum of understanding with Tridel and TCAC, correct? So you know what's going on. And yes, councillor Bailly, I'm planning to run, even if I fail today. Why? Because I want to have an opportunity to debate Chris Moyes. Hey, Chris? So, what I'm here, I have a few t-shirts from my 12 years activism. Here is my first reason I'm here. I used to be an employee of the Toronto Zoo. And for that reason, I became an activist. Because I was unfailably terminated. I have been a supporter of the Black Lives Matter movement. I have been a supporter of the expropriation of housing that we lost an opportunity at 214, 230 Sherburne. I am a big supporter of defunding the police. Why? Because with that money, we can accelerate housing for our less advantaged in this country, in this city. Imagine if we diverted 50% of the $1.2 billion of the Toronto Police. It would go a long way to build social housing with support. I am a man with disabilities. The only thing that stopped me is only discrimination. That's the only way. I'm a tenant rep, proud member of TCAC. I am a member of the Regent Park Neighbourhood Association. We have secured $26.8 million in community benefits. Come on, guys. That is the work of the grassroots work in this city because we know that the roots of violence, of gun violence, is poverty, my friends. We have time and time and time telling you. It's not about increasing policing. Mr. Mayor, next time Doc Ford comes to you and says, "I got extra cash for the police", you should tell them, "No, thank you. Come and give us the money that you owe us". Last week, councillor Perks, he moved a motion to call Doc Ford a bully because he truly is a bully. You know, we have enough time discussing about money for our housing progress in this city. And tomorrow, my friends, believe it or not, I wish it won't happen, but he may get re-elected. And the poor of this city are in trouble because he owes us money, $55 million, my friend. And what I see happening is a return over 44 seats that Doc Ford cut it. This is my t-shirt. When I ran for council in 2014 against Pam McConnell, I got 800 votes, believe it or not. But I want the restoration of our city council because it's a city of $2.4 million, and we need proper representation. The only way to do it, my friend, is to break the law. We had to break...
Can you wrap it up, please?
The Constitution, so we become independent, and we have control over tax section. So we can address our social housing issues. And I want to be a member of our General Affairs Committee because I want to ensure that the truth and reconciliation plan of this council, it really happens.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Frances.
Do we have questions? Okay, thank you. Next candidate.
Speaker, our next candidate is Andrea Kelly.
Okay, Andrea, you have five minutes.
Good morning, thank you. I want to say good morning to everybody here and thank you for your time. I know we're all trying to get to lunch, so I won't take up too much of your time today. But I am here as I want to speak to you a bit about my interest in the role. I also want to start by, you know, speaking about my hesitation. There's been more than a few times today that I've asked myself, "What am I actually doing? Or what am I doing coming here?". I don't have a background in community and public service. I do live in the Ward 13. I work in the Ward 13. And I have spent the last 12 years in the city of Toronto. I did my undergrad at the University of Toronto in political science, philosophy, and English. I didn't think I was going to stay in Toronto as long as I have, but there's something about the city that has kept pulling me back. I have lived in many different communities in the city, not just Ward 13. And I see that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of issues that we could say are the key priority today. I know in an interim position, I will only be, you know, filling a role. And in this capacity, I actually see an opportunity here for me to gain a deeper understanding of what it means to be involved in city council. In my role, in my career today, I have worked as the Director of Finance and Controller in various software tech startups in Toronto. I have helped them grow. And I've helped these businesses get acquired, sometimes by different Canadian companies or otherwise. But essentially, my skill set lends towards leadership, decision-making, building systems that work towards efficiency, effectiveness. And I take pride in the work that I do. I see a lot of great work having been done in Ward 13 already today by councillor Wong Tam, or former councillor Wong Tam. And I see the amazing work of the councillor's office to continue that, you know, in our ward. So there's no doubt that there are some great candidates available to you guys today. I speak to you still of my interest because I see that there is a need to connect deeper into our community on multiple levels. Safety across our community, across our city, is paramount. And feeling safe in multiple ways, you know, affordable housing, walking outside of your door, going to the subway station. I think that it all comes back to really having a deep sense of community within the, you know, environment that you live. I think that most of the people today who are here and engaged already feel that deep sense of community. I think that most of the people today who are here and engaged already feel that deep sense of community. But I wonder, and I ask, if we really know how to deeply engage with the other part of our community that doesn't necessarily feel that deep sense of responsibility to kind of better know your neighbors and the people around you. And so, I see this as a unique opportunity for myself to gain understanding of the city council and also, you know, support the city, the councillor's staff with the objectives and the projects that they have ongoing today. As we said, this is an interim position. I don't see new projects being submitted after councillor Wong-Tam has left. And I definitely know that there is already, you know, a very deep understanding of what needs to take place and, you know, what those next steps are. So I want to help bring my skill set to the team to help enable them to actually meet those goals. I see as well with, you know, Robin running, that there will definitely be, you know, a seamless transition for the next councillor. And I don't doubt in any way, shape, or form that that would be afforded. I just offer an alternative, I think, today to some of the other, you know, experiences, skill sets, and also no disruption in what currently exists if I were to come on board. I really want to help, you know, maintain the work that's been completed today. And I would really love the opportunity to get a deeper understanding of what we have here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Bailaud?
The question, if you have any intentions of running in the next municipal election anywhere in the city?
I think I'm undecided at this time. I'll be honest, that my interest in this role really came because I have an opportunity right now in between, you know, my workload, to actually consider what my next step is going to be in my career. And I looked at the upcoming election and I was really considering, do I want to? Do I want to run? I don't want to unseat anybody, right? I see that there's a lot of open words at this time. I don't actually think I would run in Ward 13 because I think Chris Moyes is a really great candidate that's currently, you know, already put his name in that ward. But I would really want to see what the landscape looks like in the next few months to have a really, an understanding of how I could impact this, you know, this committee, or just this committee, sorry, the council and, you know, committees that are currently underway.
Thank you. Okay, our next candidate?
Speaker, the next candidate is Raynard Khan. Speaker, I'll call that name one last time. The next speaker is Raynard Khan. Speaker, the candidate does not appear to be present in the meeting or online. So, that is the last speaker on our list, but I will call Sarah Gardner's name one more time in case Sarah Gardner has rejoined the meeting. Sarah Gardner present? Madam Speaker, I do not see Sarah Gardner present either. So that completes the list of candidates.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of council wish to speak at this time? Please put your name on your request to speak. No? Okay. Members of council, I will now ask the city clerk to instruct you on the balloting process.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, we're ready to proceed with the balloting for the appointment of councillor for Ward 13, Toronto Centre. We will be using the very same procedure as we used for the previous item, the appointment of the councillor of Ward 10. I propose to dispense with the detailed reading of the rules unless you wish me to do otherwise, Madam Speaker. But I will recap a couple of key points. The first is that it will take a majority of members present and voting to elect a candidate, to appoint a candidate. And the second point, I'll reiterate, is both for members in the room and members participating online. If you would, please remain in the meeting and please not leave the meeting, either in person or virtually, until the balloting is complete. And again, a reminder for those participating remotely, we'll be using a system of admitting you to a breakout room in the WebEx conference. And therefore, you should keep an eye on your screen for the pop-up message that will invite you to join that breakout room. Okay? And with that, Madam Speaker, unless there are any other questions of members on the process, we are ready to commence with the balloting. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, I will say one last thing. The members who are participating remotely, if you will have your camera on, please, for the entirety of the balloting, whether you're in the breakout room or not, just so that we can keep an eye on quorum and attendance. Thank you very much.
Okay, members of council, we'll have a five-minute recess.
Okay, members of council, we'll have a five-minute recess.
I will now read the names of the members casting votes for each of the candidates. The votes from each ballot will also be reproduced in the minutes of this meeting. For Azeem Leela, councillor Mark Grimes. For Robin Buxton-Potts, councillor Anna Bylaw. Councillor Brad Bradford. Councillor Shelley Carroll. Councillor Mike Cole. Councillor Gary Crawford. Councillor John Fillion. Councillor Paula Fletcher. Councillor Stephen Holliday. Councillor Mike Layton. Councillor Josh Matlow. Councillor Jennifer McKelvey. Speaker Francis Nuzziata. Councillor James Pasternak. Councillor Gord Perks. Councillor Anthony Perutza. Councillor Jay Robinson. Councillor Michael Thompson. And Mayor John Tory. Madam Speaker, I declare that Robin Buxton-Potts is appointed as councillor for Ward 13 Toronto Centre for the remainder of this term of council.
Thank you, and on behalf of City Council, I wish to congratulate Robin Potts on being appointed to the office of councillor for Ward 13 Toronto Centre. I would also like to thank all the candidates who participated in the appointment for Ward 13. Councillor Carroll, I understand that you have a motion to appoint the new councillor for Ward 13 to the same committees and boards as the previous member.
Yes, similar to the mayor's motion earlier. Although it strikes me, Madam Speaker, when you look at the long lists on these motions, we maybe have insight into why the other two exhausted councillors resigned. That City Council appoint Robin Buxton-Potts to the following such appointments to take effect on the date that Robin Buxton-Potts takes office as councillor for Ward 13 Toronto Centre. A) the Planning and Housing Committee for a term of office until November 14, 22, and until a successor is appointed. B) the Board of Health for a term of office, I hope that's considered read. C) the Toronto Accessibility Advisory Committee as chair for a term of office. I hope the rest can be considered read. And D) the Two-Spirit Lesbian Gay Bisexual Transgender and Queer Advisory Committee as chair for a term of office ending November 14, 2022.
All those in favor, show of hands, carried. In addition to these appointments, the new councillor will also do various award-based appointments by virtue of office, such as arena boards via AAs and community centre boards, as well as T.O. Live and Young Dundas Square. Members, the city clerk will arrange for the new members for Wards 10 and 13 to take the declaration of office at the earliest opportunity. Once the members have taken the declaration of office, the members can officially take their seats on council. May I have a motion to introduce bills on the appointment? A move by councillor Thompson, councillor, if you can read the motion. It's on the screen.
That leave be granted to introduce Bill 497 and 498.
Shall leave be granted to introduce these bills? All those in favor, opposed if any carried. Shall these bills be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, opposed if any carried. May I have a motion regarding absentees? Councillor Pasternak?
Maybe I can move, Madam Speaker, I have my portal open. The City Council has fused the absence of councillor Paul Ainsley and councillor Michael Ford for the June 1, 2022 special City Council meeting.
All those in favor, show of hands, opposed if any carried. May I have a motion to introduce the confirming bill? Moved by councillor McKelvey.
That leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of City Council meeting on, sorry, City Council meeting 44 on June 1, 2022.
Shall leave be granted to introduce this bill? All those in favor, show of hands, carried. Shall this be, shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, opposed if any carried. And I want to thank staff and the members of the public that are here today. Council, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Speaker.